Get the hell out, we want to go home. Good evening, everyone, we're about to start the program. So you want to, no, no, it's a long, speak first.
We're sure, we're sure, chair.
You're not, we're not putting you.
It's crazy.
Okay. She's so gorgeous, okay, sorry. Fifteen, she doesn't want to go first. Good evening, everyone, welcome to the second public hearing of Bally's Bronx Community Advisory Committee. My name is Lisa Soren and I serve as the Chair of this committee. By law, the committee consists of members appointed by specific elected officials who represent the proposed proposal site. This committee is notoriously charged with reviewing Bally's Bronx application. To achieve this, each member of the committee has been reviewing the application. And today, we are receiving public comments regarding Bally's Bronx. Before we begin, there are some ground rules. This hearing is an opportunity for the community to offer comments on Bally's Bronx and not a venue for public to ask questions of either the committee members or the applicant. Individuals wishing to speak must sign up at the table. We are signing speakers on a first come, first served basis and calling speakers to the mic in chronological order. Your speaker number is your place in line. If you do not present, when you're, if you are not present when the speaker, your speaker number is called, this light, okay? You will forfeit your turn. When it is your turn to speak, please state your speaker number and name. Speakers will have exactly two minutes to speak. At the two-minute mark, your mic will be turned off. And that is to give everyone an opportunity to say what they need to say. A countdown timer is visible for each speaker, is aware of how much time they have remaining. Speakers sign up, will be capped at 120 speakers. Additional speakers may sign up depending on the timing and pace of the event. A speaker waitlist will be maintained if needed. Please be respectful of the venue, the organizing team, and noise levels as this is a shared building space. Today's hearing is being livestreamed, recorded, and will be posted online soon after the event concludes. Okay, in addition to presenting comments today, you can also submit comments via email and mail on the website. All comments spoken, emailed, and written will be documented and given equal review and weight by committee members. The committee must complete all its work by September 30th, 2025. Those wishing to submit comments are advised to do so as soon as possible. Finally, attendees must remain respectful and courteous. Disruptions will not be tolerated. Anyone using offensive, threatening, or obscene language or behavior will be asked to leave. With that, the committee looks forward to your important participation and your comments as part of this process. Speakers, please remember to state your speaker name, speaker number, and name. Remember that you have exactly two minutes to speak. We're ready to start.
All right, thank you, Lisa. Before we begin, a quick reminder to please mute your cell phones. And please try to remain quiet so everyone has the same amount of time and quiet and respect. And with that, I would like to call speaker numbers one to five to the podium, please. Speaker one. Go with order right now, or do you want to call them to? Yeah, if you're okay to do that right now.
No, we'll do it.
After these guys? Okay. Speaker one is not here. Okay, next in line is our speaker two. All right, thank you.
Speaker two, Dorothy Krenicki. I am opposed to this. My reasons are, number one, it's a sad day that corporate America can play around with our democratic process. The communities have been against it, the community board, et cetera. Even the city council was against the zoning change. And it's interesting that it was vetoed and never overturned. Also, our elected officials and Bally's never mentioned that Trump would get $115 million should this casino go through, our green space. He's making money on that. Also, the environmental impact will be extreme. What Robert Moses did to my hometown has taken 50 years to recover from. Bally's is going to ruin this part of the Bronx. All of their development that they want environmentally will harm the water, the air. They're being, it's being built over, a lot filled with garbage. So once that's open, air quality goes. We've been part of the process, but we haven't really, there was a community board, there was a meeting at the Borough Presidents months ago, and the community was only told the day before, oh, that's your way, your strategy of keeping our voices silenced. And it's interesting, all the elected officials have you on it, but it's a community committee? I'm a community person, lifelong Bronx kid. So, sorry, unions, I'm a UFT union, believe in unions, but it's bogus. They're going to do all sorts of construction, disabled. Communities and casinos have never been helpful to real communities. Oh yeah, by the way, Eric Adams is for it because Trump pardoned him. Thank you.
I start, okay. All right, my name is Andrew Chirico, I'm number three. I represent the Waterbury LaSalle Community Homeowners Association. I'm also a former member of Community Board 10 for 20 years. I represent Waterbury LaSalle, 250 family members who have expressed their concerns over the Bally's Casino. We are opposed to casino in Ferry Point. I've also given you two petitions, 880 signatures, and 30 written statements by people who live in the community. Now, when Community Board 10 held their two hearings, their vote was overwhelmingly against having the casino in Ferry Point. When the question went to City Hall, the City Council also held a hearing and, I'm sorry, and their vote was overwhelmingly against. The casinos prey on communities that can least afford, can least afford it. Generally speaking, the people, people, gambling lose 10 to 15% of their stake on every session. Okay, I also want to point out, we can't afford the additional traffic and the crime that the casinos would bring to this community. Also, the land under that casino, under that Ferry Point, is a contaminated swamp. It's filled in and it's encapsulated. If you were allow them to build, the poison under that swamp would kill people.
I'm number, I'm number four, my name is Sandy Lusk. Many, most people in the areas surrounding the site and in the contiguous and adjacent areas do not want this despite the constant headlines saying, oh, everybody's for it, we're all in, et cetera, et cetera. So who really wants this is the state who will get $500,000 signing bonus. President Trump will get $150 million through this contract. And despite the promises of what they were going to do to the community, for the community, and I understand that they did buy the land and keep Preston open, I remind people that Bally's is not a charity. Okay, the other thing is, and I, you know, peer-reviewed literature has done studies to see the effects of casinos sighted in locations, in communities. It has shown that there's an uptick in crime, prostitution, and gambling addiction. I realize that I'm spitting in the wind, I know that this is going to be a done deal, I have no doubt about it. However, I feel the Bronx really deserves a better development, something like a school or a nature center because they are taking parkland for this. And we don't need what turns out to be ultimately, in the long run, a parasite on the community. Thank you very much. All right, number five, Audra Pessaro.
I'm going to ask everyone in the audience to please keep it down while testimony is happening, thank you.
I'm 58 years old. I lived here all my life. Excuse me. It is terrible to see that you would tear down that Bally's location and put a casino and a hotel to bring in jobs? People that don't even live in this neighborhood are nowhere, what could they bring in? What could they do? You're ruining the neighborhood, it's a family, it's a family area. Excuse me. It's really a shame that the dollar value means more to you than anything else. You're ruining the property, you're ruining what could, there could be other wonderful things brought there. The people rely on this neighborhood. The home values will be ruined, decreased, people will move away. Other people move in, people lose their rights of rent because they'll be kicked out. A lot of changes will be made that we don't want, nor do we need. I hope you can find it in your heart to think about this, this was thrown out. We were grateful that it was thrown out. We only hope that this can be turned around for the people that live here and that want to continue to live here. Look for other places to build this Bally's and hotels. These people can have jobs someplace else, but not here. They don't deserve to. Thank you.
Speaker numbers six through 10, please.
Number six, Joe Angle. I too am a longtime resident of Bronx, graduate of Mount St. Michael Academy. And I often wonder where I would be without development. And if I depended on the Bronx to save me, I'd be in trouble. Thank God, there's other communities that allowed us to develop. Certainly, the choice is yours, right? And certainly, I believe in eminent domain. So maybe this neighborhood could use a mental hospital, or a jail, or a school, or a park, or whatever it might be. Regardless of Mr. Trump's financial success on this project, I truly believe that the Bronx deserves an opportunity. I know for sure it's happening in Yonkers, and I'm pretty confident that's happening in Queens at Resorts World. So why not here? Why not working people in this city having the opportunity to have union jobs? Having an opportunity to build something? If you've ever come over to White Stone Bridge and you look to the right, the fact that it says Trump, whatever there, is quite frightening, it's quite frightening, it's quite disgusting, and I personally.
Okay, can we bring, excuse me? We, we want to continue.
Can you stop my time?
Yes, we're taking notes. Ladies and gentlemen.
The bottom line is this, folks, regardless of traffic, I think you all know what LaGuardia Airport looked like at one time. And there is a reality in this world called traffic engineering. And guess what? They could get on, they could get off, quite simply. And the bottom line is, my children need jobs. And I'm purchasing a property on the corner, and I will purchase yours, thank you.
A reminder to please hold your applause, please hold all the comments and disruptions to allow everyone the same amount of time to speak. And another reminder for cell phones. Thank you, go ahead.
Speaker number seven, my name is Sandra Justice. I've lived in the 10465 zip code since I was 11. In 1956, I moved here, graduated from the high school across the street in 1962. I have watched this neighborhood become overdeveloped, the traffic is horrendous. I live in Locust Point where we can't even get out of our neighborhood with the traffic that's coming from people that do not live here. Okay, for hours and hours, we watched the house burn down because of traffic, because the fire trucks couldn't get through. So this casino, in my opinion, would not do us any good. I've been to Atlantic City, it's a dump. I've been up to Empire, the surrounding neighborhood has gone down. Our real estate properties will definitely diminish if this casino goes up. And most of the people here, I doubt even live in this zip code. So I feel they shouldn't even be here representing what we want. Speak to the people that belong on 10465, 10461, 10462. Those are the people that matter, not the people that live elsewhere, or the union jobs. I am a retiree of a union, I was an administrator for 32 years, so I know what union membership is. And I'm the last to deny someone a job, but I'm also the last to destroy people's homes, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Fred Torres, speaking number eight. I come to this podium once a month. I represent about 150 members of Local 3, we meet right here in this room every month. I would like to stress that, you know, we're for this, we're for the Bally's. You know, besides the, besides the jobs, the permanent jobs, the careers, the pensions, right, the way of life, the Bronx needs this job here, right? Our kids, when I was in high school, you know, teenagers had jobs to go to, right? You know, whether it was McDonald's or whatever, you know, fast food jobs, they were able to find a job. My 16-year-old son cannot find a job if it's not a sporting, a sporting crew, right, or a sporting academy. He cannot go out to the real world and find a job, interview for a job. Why is that? You know, bringing this, bringing this Bally's here will open up jobs for adults to pave the way for their career, right? And find, sustain a lifestyle that will open up jobs, other, you know, starter jobs for our teenagers. Okay, so, you know, this is very important. You know, we got plenty of teenagers in this neighborhood, we got plenty of teenagers that play volleyball right in this gym here that would love to have this Bally's here so they can have opportunities for growth, for, for work opportunities to get into the work field. Right? So, thank you, have a good night.
That's number three, all right. Yeah, welcome, Bally Bronx Community Advisory Committee. My name is Cedric Fergus, I'm from the Bronx, my wife is here too, lovely wife. We both worked together as retired phys ed teachers in the South Bronx. And I'm definitely for this project, and why not? I'm from Calhoun City, so we have an animal shelter there. I was against the animal shelter, but guess what, it's open up next year. I was against, I was also against the Barclay Center. Guess what, I'm a Caesar ticket holder for the Liberty. So be where it is, and also my community board was against the animal shelter too. So it's going to happen, it should happen. Like I said, I'm a retired teacher, we need programs for our youth, we need the support of Bally's. They did a good job supporting Preston High School. There's just no reason why we shouldn't have this, this, this Bally's here at all. For the Bronx, think about the Bronx, the Bronx don't have major development here. I mean, they're going to have a private casino in Queens and Brooklyn, or Manhattan, we should have it here. Okay, people are going to gamble, people have the seven apps you could gamble on for sports. All right, so people will gamble, we just need, we just need Bally's here in the Bronx. Okay, and we got stuff from the animal shelter in Calhoun, I live in Calhoun City. We got certain items because we got the animal shelter there, and this is what happened here too. So that's all I have to say, thank you too.
I'm going to deviate from the numbers for one minute. We have some elected officials who have taken time from their extremely busy schedule to be here, Councilmember Marmarado.
Hello, how's everybody doing? Good? Sure, give me one second. So, good evening and thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. I strongly oppose the Bally's Ferry Point proposal from day one. This project has failed to answer the real concerns of our community.
Or you're against, please hold your applause to allow the council to speak, thank you.
This project has failed to answer real concerns of our community. What's being proposed is the country's largest casino to be built on public parkland. This will fundamentally alter life in our neighborhood as we know it. Traffic, my major concern from day one. This site was converted to a golf course for a reason, it is not built to handle huge peak crowds. A casino will draw thousands of cars, we will create a traffic nightmare that will spill into the surrounding streets, and the people who live here know that. The project's own traffic work shows congestion problems, and the study omitted critical conditions that residents live with every single day, and air quality, this breaks my heart. The air quality baseline sampling was taken in the South Bronx, a community already burdened with some of the highest rates of asthma in this city due to vehicular pollution. Using that baseline allows a project to minimize the real health impacts that additional traffic and emissions will have on nearby residents and our children in this community. And Parkland Alien Nation was the biggest joke, it was treated like a formality. When I asked for acre-to-acre parkland replacement in our community, I was completely shut down. They are offering replacement over six miles away in City Island. That is not replacement, it is an abandonment of the people who actually use Ferry Point Park and the residents of Throcksnack. There was no genuine community input, even in our first CAC meeting, there was a suggestion to make the site family-friendly, and that was completely brushed off. That tells us Bally's priorities, they want gamblers, they do not want neighbors. And now proximity to gambling, to casinos will bring documented social costs. All right, I, all right, anyway, can you please handle this?
Excuse me, ladies and gentlemen.
All right, well, I'm going to continue. So, now, proximity to casinos brings documented social.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to ask to please be respectful, or you will be asked to leave. You will be asked to leave, respect.
Increased problems gambling and burdens on an already vulnerable borough. So if nobody's going to speak up for the Bronx, just know that I'm going to be the voice of this borough and the people there.
Again, all those in attendance, we ask that you please remain respectful, or you will be asked to leave or be removed.
And I want to make one thing abundantly clear, I am the sitting council member in this district. When I go to community meetings, I know a majority of the faces, and I do not know the majority, these people that are here that are for the project. They do not belong in this community, and let me tell you another thing, jobs are jobs. They will be here, so for the sake of my family, my children.
Ladies and gentlemen, go ahead, council member.
This is the disrespect.
I know. We're going to start removing individuals.
These people are paid by the project to be here to speak, and they are disrespectful. So listen, for our children, our community.
Excuse me, allow her to finish. Ladies and gentlemen, okay, we're going to have to call security and begin to remove people. Excuse me. Councilmember? Councilman? Yes.
Hey, everybody, my name is Amanda Septimo, I represent the South Bronx, I'm going to speak next. Let's let her go ahead and finish, and we'll get to it right after.
I may take it a couple more minutes with that comment. Anyway, listen, for our children, our health, and our community, and for the people that live right here who will be directly impacted, I ask you to please do not support this proposal and vote no, thank you very much.
We're going to call Assemblywoman Amanda Septimo to the podium.
Hi, everybody, as you heard, my name is Amanda Septimo. I have the honor and privilege of representing the South Bronx in the State Assembly. I also have the honor and privilege of being a daughter of the Bronx. I grew up in this community, there is not a place in this world that I love more than the Bronx, that I will stand up to fight and defend more than the Bronx. So thank you to all of you for being here, because whatever side you're on, I know you're here because you love the Bronx. Thank you to the committee for the space as well. Now, when you look at the.
The last elected official?
So, I'm not going to get South Bronx on this lady in the back, but we can talk outside if you'd like. All right, so, to the board, to the committee, we are here, I want to ask everyone, I just want to let you know, everyone let her finish because I asked them to, so if you could find it in yourself to be respectful for a minute, we would all appreciate it. We know that this project has benefits in jobs, it has community benefits, it has property value implications, it has benefits for employers. It has benefits for employees. It has opportunities for small businesses. It has all of these things that you all already know. But at its core, this project is the largest economic development project in the borough's history. There has never been development this big in our borough's history. And there's so many benefits that I, be quiet, please, for one second. So, I wanna focus on the fact that this is an opportunity for our community that other communities get all the time. So, I wanna point out these numbers to you for one second. Current planned development just in New York City, $8 billion into LaGuardia Airport, $19 billion into JFK Airport, both in Queens. Interboro Express, it's gonna be light rail. It was supposed to include the Bronx. Guess what? It doesn't anymore. They're gonna spend $5 billion to build that in Brooklyn and Queens. Penn Station in Manhattan, $7 billion in development. When is it our turn? The answer is now. We have to create our own opportunities in the Bronx. We do not have the privilege to say, you know what? I'm gonna wait forever because somebody doesn't want their park to change. By the way, the park that is a swamp, that someone who's against the project described it themselves, a park that is not usable right now. So, I want to highlight that we have to create these opportunities ourselves if we are ever going to change the story of our borough. I know that you all get the same looks when you say you live in the Bronx, no matter where you live in the Bronx. You get those looks. No matter where you live in the Bronx, those realtors talk about your property values. And guess what? It's because it's the Bronx. And if we're ever gonna change that, then we have to take charge and this is the opportunity to do that. Just to finish up, because I do wanna be respectful of people's time, this casino is going somewhere. This is our opportunity to seize this moment, seize this opportunity for our community. And this, someone mentioned families, guess what? This is about families. It's about my family. It's about families in the South Bronx. It's about families all over the Bronx because we are one Bronx. And for anybody who sits there and tries to divide us, you have to understand that you will be the ones that keep our community back forever and we won't let you. We are here to say that is over. And the last thing I wanna say, because I heard the South Bronx mentioned, I live and represent the South Bronx. You know what's in my district? Yankee Stadium. Guess what? Yankee Stadium creates millions of dollars of economic impact and that money pays for roads right here in 10465. That money pays for schools right here in 10465. That money is shared by our whole community and we never say, you don't belong in my community. We never say, you can't share in this wealth. No, because we understand that the way forward is us being connected and together. So, to the committee, you have an incredibly important job. I hope that you will zero in on the story and the future of our borough because that's what this opportunity is about, to say it's finally our turn. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Assemblywoman. Um, we have Assemblywoman Tapia. Are you here?
Good evening, everyone. I am Doodleka Tapia and I represent the 86th Assembly District here in my beloved Bronx. And I wouldn't say it's an honor to be here, but it's a, but it's really good that we can put in the table what we think about, what the Bronx has been for us for many years. We have been left behind all along for too long. And, and tonight, I'm here because I believe in good jobs. Because I believe in union jobs. Because I was in the executive board DC 37 for 21 years. So I know what unions mean for our people and for our community. So this project will create more than 15,000 union construction jobs. Yep. And over 3,500 permanent jobs. You know how many we're losing now with the new guy that is in the, in the White House? We're losing lots, everything, jobs, every single day. These are union jobs with healthcare. Hello? 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 These are union jobs with healthcare benefits and real career pathways that can sustain Bronx families. And that's my priority, our families. But this project is more, is about more than jobs. It is about investing in the Bronx. Bally's has committed over $100 million to improve our parklands and green spaces, transit access and a new NYPD substation. This project creates a stable, middle-class careers right here in the Bronx. It invests in our neighborhoods. It strengthen our community. And it shows what development can look like when it is done the right way. Union jobs with community input and with real benefits for Bronx residents. I am proud to support this proposal.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I thought this job would be easy for me. This is really about having your voices heard in a respectful manner. So we have some options here. Unfortunately, you forced our hand and the police is on its way. So the fact that we actually have police presence because you all can't seem to control yourselves is a problem. And/or we're gonna stop this hearing until everybody calms down and then you can either wait until we're ready to start and then we start again. No clapping, no yelling, no booing. Literally, you're sitting here, you're listening. As you finish, you can exit. The minute this begins again, we're gonna completely stop the meeting and have the individuals removed. Those who have already caused the problems will be removed in a few minutes. So I'm going to repeat again. Okay. Lady, excuse me. Excuse, like I said, this will be handled, but we really, people have taken time out of a long day to be here to have their voices heard. We, we will address that issue in a minute. Okay. Okay, excuse. Okay, we're gonna be calling number 10. Okay, the next we're gonna call. Okay, we're gonna take a five-minute break. Through 15 to the podium. 11 through 15, come up to the podium, please. Ladies and gentlemen, take your seat. I'm gonna ask that you speak loudly while everybody decide. Hold one second. Hold on one second.
Which park issue? Um, so it's, um, they, it's not like square foot for square foot. It's within a dollar amount. So parks, um, I think it's like 110 million or something like that.
Can I ask the people in the back? Ladies and gentlemen, the individuals in the back, if you can silence down, thank you very much. The floor is yours, young lady.
Good evening. My name is Angie DePaolo. I am from the Arlington Avenue Homeowners Association and Senior Citizens Program. Through their actions, Bally's has already demonstrated a commitment to the surrounding community by stepping up at Preston High School and making it possible for the students to continue their education. Not many organizations would have done this and they should be commended for this. This project will provide many jobs during the construction phase and afterwards when the casino was operating. Too many times, the Bronx has gone bad publicity, but this project and the state-of-the-art facility will put the Bronx on the map as a go-to location for ed, entertainment. This, I feel, is greatly needed for our area and long overdue. Our seniors can now travel a short distance for entertainment, which is a plus. Also, the police substation and improvement to the park area of Ferry Point are the right thing to do and greatly needed for the overall needs of the Bronx community. Thank you and have a good evening.
Please, no clapping. Thank you.
Um, number 12, Gregory Concepcion, Bronx resident, um, 10461, by the way, uh, Westchester Square. Um, I can't believe there's such a fuss and such a fight against jobs coming to the Bronx. Um, not too long ago, in Westchester Square, we got three homeless shelters. My house is surrounded now by three homeless shelters, by the way. And I don't remember you guys fighting so hard against that, but you're fighting against this. It's kinda, it's, it's crazy. This is gonna bring jobs, gonna bring opportunities, but you fight and you're fighting really hard, but when it, when it came time for those homeless shelters, you guys just gave in. Um, I'm all for it. We need it and, uh, you guys fighting against it. See you guys at the, at the voting booth.
How you doing? My name is Ray West. I'm the Bronx Business Representative.
I'm the Bronx Business Representative for the IBW Local Three Electricians, and I also am born and raised and still live in Throggs Neck. Obviously, as a labor person, I'm for this project. I'm for it because it is combined, not just the development of the casino, all the infrastructure around, all the flooding, all the attention to detail that's been put in, the substation, a lot of the things that was said before, the maintenance jobs, the union jobs, all of that stuff, I'm obviously for as a labor person. As a person from Throggs Neck who grew up here my whole life, I know that down by Ferry Point Park has always been a desolate area. I grew up here and I didn't really hang out down there too much unless I was getting in trouble, to be totally honest with you, right? So to me, putting anything there to clean it up and bring in jobs and bring in stuff to the community, shows, places to have venue space, places to have maintenance jobs, places to have mini concerts, places to have things that attract people and commerce in the Bronx, to me is a benefit. The other thing I want to say on the Bronx as a whole, um, there aren't that many good partners in development like Bally's has been so far. So I believe all the concerns that we have, that I share some of them as a Throggs Neck person, I believe Bally's is committed to doing the right thing and paying attention to the detail, and I believe the community will have a voice in the future if the project goes off. So I support Bally's and this project. Thank you very much.
Reminder to please hold your applause. Please hold your applause. Thank you. Thank you. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Kayla Ortiz. I live in the Bronx and I've been working in Throggs Neck for about five years now. I am a coach here at Legacy Volleyball Club since I was twenty years old, and Legacy has given me the opportunity and the support to begin my early professional career. They supported me as I just obtained my JD, the first lawyer in my family and any of my extended family, a tool that I obtained because I want to give back and use that tool to benefit the communities in the Bronx. Let's be clear that the wealthy people that have been mentioned are gonna profit regardless. I'm not worried about the well-being of our president. I'm not worried about the well-being of wealthy people. I'm worried about the well-being of our community. And so with the Community Investment Plan, we'll make sure that we're actually finally included in economic growth, and that places like Legacy Volleyball Club that have literally saved children's lives by giving them positive community to be a part of, continue to be sustainable. If the money doesn't go into our community, it's going to go elsewhere, and there's no community more deserving than the Bronx. We have been creative, resilient, with finite resources. It's time to see what our community can do when we truly invest in it and work out of abundance. So often, we are not receiving the fruits of our labor and what we continue to contribute to the Bronx, to the city, and to the state as a whole. It's time to reinvest in the best people of all, our community.
Sorry, I'm like really tall, so I may have to bend down. Um, my name is Anthony Lala. I am speaker number fifteen, and I come to you guys here today not only as an adult, but also a kid that grew up here through Legacy Volleyball Club. I'm the Finance Director at the club, but beyond everything, I'm gonna move this, give me one second. I'm gonna move this one. Can we just get me back to like one forty-five, please? So beyond everything that's happening here, I do not live in the Bronx, but I will speak as somebody who has grown, lived, and abided by all the rules of somebody that lives in Queens right next to Resorts World Casino. I've been through all of the taxes, taxes on properties and all of these jobs and wellness of the community, and I can tell you guys that I promise you it's not as bad as we all think. I've been a student in Queens and a person who lives in Queens every single day, and I promise you that our community can prosper from something like this. Beyond everything, I just want everybody to take a moment to remember what the, the word "change" means. It means to turn or convert from one state to another. Please, give Bally's a chance, and from both my perspective, as somebody who doesn't live in your community, as well as somebody who's experienced it from the Resorts World community in Queens, it, change will occur, but we need to give it a chance. We need to give it a chance to be able to reinvest, just like Bally's has said to us. They've put it in writing. It's not something that's just spoken and slapped on a wall or on a poster. It's something that we have seen, and we've seen the growth of it throughout both communities that they've already served, as well as what they're committed to doing now. I ask you guys to just take a moment of your time to take a look at what that community, community investment project looks like, because as somebody who lived through it with Resorts World, I can promise you that it'll give you exactly what you need for all the children who may come after me at Legacy Volleyball Club, or for any of the adults that may be in the room that have a need for change in the society. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Community Board. Thank you for everyone for listening to me for nine extra seconds.
And thank you for the room for being quiet and cooperative. I'd like to call speakers sixteen to twenty to the microphone now. Sixteen through twenty.
Yeah, sixteen. Good evening, everybody. Um, I'm not gonna take the full two minutes or extra like Anthony did, but, um, hi, my name is Jennifer Santos, and I'm the General Manager at Legacy Volleyball Club. Um, I oversee our youngest athletes, ages five to fourteen years old, um, and these kids thrive when they have safe spaces and role models. Um, Bally's plan ensures that more Bronx children grow up in environments that nurture, not endanger their potential. Um, I ask you to approve this project for the sake of our kids. I feel like change is very much needed, especially in this community. Um, we urge you to support this project and help deliver lasting benefits for the Bronx residents. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Joel Sanchez. I am the Founder and Executive Director of Legacy Volleyball Club, based out of the Bronx, specifically out of the American Turner Club, which is where you guys are right now, right here in the Throggs Neck community. And I'm speaking as supporter of the Bally's Project over at Ferry Point Park. As someone directly connected to the community as a student, resident, and business owner of Legacy Volleyball Club, a Bronx-based five oh one C three youth empowerment organization, I know how important safe fall maintenance spaces are for young people and families. Bally's commitment to improving Ferry Point Park will directly benefit organizations like ours and the kids we serve, which is currently at thirty-two thousand and counting. All right, do I need to guys, uh, we could be reminded about what happened with Preston, which Bally's, uh, Bally's, uh, came through and saved Preston, which we're very thankful for. This project is also about jobs and opportunity. The Bronx has long been overlooked for major investments, and Bally's proposal would bring good-paying jobs, union jobs, and new economic opportunities that strengthen families in our community. We urge you guys to support this project, uh, to deliver lasting effects to the Bronx. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Nadia Lau, and I'm one of the coaches at, uh, Legacy. Uh, we take Bronx kids to compete across the country. Behind every trip is a reality that our borough lacks in any investment. Bally's project is here to change that. It creates jobs for parents, safe facilities for practice, and hope for kids to, who dream big. Please support this opportunity. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Um, hello, dear members of the Community Advisory Council. My name is Leslie Almonte. I grew up, um, I grew up playing for Legacy Volleyball Club, and now I'm working here as a bookkeeper, building, uh, building my career at the tournament club. Legacy gave me a safe place when I was young and helped me out with, um, a lot of things I didn't know when I get here to, um, the United States, I'm from Dominican Republic. And now I want the same, the same opportunity for the next generation. Um, Bally's project, we bring better space and more opportunity for the Bronx kid and family, so please support this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Alejandro Galardo, and I'm the Boys Program Director here at Legacy Volleyball Club. I was born and raised in Throggs Neck, right on Logan Avenue, so I know firsthand the challenges our kids and the, uh, community faces. At Legacy, I've seen boys thrive when they have safe spaces, mentors, and structured programs. Bally's plan will bring jobs, apprenticeships, and community investment that creates more of these opportunities right here in the Bronx. It will also ensure that more Bronx children grow up in environments that nurture, not endanger their potential. I urge you to approve this project, not just for economic growth, but for the future of our children. It's a chance to give kids safe outlets, positive role models, and opportunities to reach their potential. Supporting this project means supporting the next generations of leaders in our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much again. Another reminder to please remain quiet and respectful while speakers are talking. Thank you. Can I have numbers twenty-one through twenty-five, please? Twenty-one through twenty-five. Another reminder for cell phones, please.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Eric Munoz. I live in this zip code. I live in this district, and I am in favor of this casino going up. All right? I'd like to take a moment and remind you guys that this is also the district that stopped buildings, low-income buildings, from going up. We cannot let another project be stopped here in this district. This district is not untouchable. This is also part of the Bronx. If you guys want to be part of the Bronx, you guys gotta be part of the Bronx. If not, you guys can't isolate yourselves. You cannot stop the future of the Bronx from growing because you're worried about your property taxes or your property going down. Excuse me. We can't. We can't, because I couldn't say nothing about the methadone clinic that went up where I live. I'm still living with those people in my neighborhood. Do I, did anybody come forward to help me out?
Excuse me, this is not a dialogue. Please let him speak. Thank you.
I'd like to continue. I graduated from St. Raymond's High School in two thousand. Once I finished high school, like many other young kids in this youth, I had no, I had no idea which way my career was headed. I had somebody present Local Three to me and guide me in the right direction. My union gave me the power to be a part of something, a reason to wake up at five in the morning, get on the train at six in the morning, be at work in Manhattan at seven in the morning, stay out of the streets by nine PM. The youth has to be out of the streets, and this is how we keep them out of the streets. Give them work, give them a reason to make some decent money out here. All right? I was twenty-one, and I was making more, more money as a first-year apprentice than a lot of my friends were. I still got friends that are forty-four, trying to figure it out. I figured it out already. Thank God to my local and this borough.
Reserve the, the clapping. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I am, uh, Ryan Macaron. I am a resident of Yonkers, New York, and I am a proud Local Three Union Member. Um, I just want to speak from my experience growing up within the vicinity of Empire City Casino. Uh, it was strongly opposed when it first came to light that they wanted to bring digital gaming into the community, and they were worried about everything that everybody is worried about here. Traffic and all the real estate and whatnot. My parents' house is within a three or four-block vicinity of the casino. At the time, before it happened, it was around four hundred thousand. It's now looking at one point two million, and that is because of all the infrastructure that came after Empire City Casino in Yonkers and all the business that goes on around there because of the casino. And not only that, Yonkers is thriving as a city way more than it was ten to fifteen years ago, and what really tipped that first domino was the casino and the digital gaming. And one thing I want to mention is that I am actually a proud student. I was a proud student at Cardinal Spelman High School here in the Bronx, and I spent a lot of time in this neighborhood with a lot of friends that I met there. And one thing I can say is that it will benefit everybody. I still have friends, even after construction is done, that are still working at Empire City Casino and are maintaining jobs even ten years later. So it is gonna continue to bring jobs here, and it will remain to bring jobs to the community. Thank you so much.
Speaker number twenty-three. Um, good evening, everybody. Good evening to my union sisters and brothers, my Local Three brothers. I'm here as a third-year apprentice with Local Three IBW. I was born and raised in the Soundview Section of the Bronx, and for me, this isn't just another construction job. It's a chance to finally see a major investment happen here in our own borough. The last time we had something on this scale was Yankee Stadium in two thousand nine and with the Bronx Terminal Market back in two thousand and eleven. And I think it's time for the Bronx to have another project built by its own workers to be proud of. I support this project because it's union work. It means steady paychecks for years and permanent jobs after doors open, but beyond that, it means visibility. Too often, the Bronx gets overlooked when big, when big projects are planned. This shows that the Bronx deserves more and the same level of development opportunity as other boroughs. Another point that stood out to me from the last hearing on Warder's Place and here this evening was the environmental concerns. The East River, the East River already has a failing grade as far as quality is concerned. It's polluted and unsafe to swim in today without this project even going on. The real question is, how do we actually clean it up? That takes money, oversight, and attention. A project of this scale with union standards, public accountability, actually creates leverage to demand improvements. Without it, the river just stays the way it is. Again, I understand that the people have concerns, and that's fair, but with the right planning, union standards, and accountability, we can make sure this project is a positive, is a, is positive for the community. To me, it's more than just a casino. It's about pride, it's about jobs, but also about building a piece of the Bronx that will be standing for decades to come, and I think it's powerful that local workers like me get to say, "We built that."
Good evening. Speaker number twenty-four, my name is Joseph Brandon. Good evening, ladies, gentlemen, board members, and all present. I'm born, raised, and am raising my family in the Bronx. I've been here for forty-four years. I'd like to say that I am in full support for the Bally's Project at Ferry Point Park. Excuse me for, I preemptively apologize for repeating or reiterating other things that people have already expressed. I find that there are many positives of, uh, Bally's Casino and Hotel will bring to the future of the Bronx, but with only, with only two minutes, I will just speak on the heaviest points I see that have value. First, before I get to the, some of the positives, I'd like to thank Bally's for what they've already done before entering the Bronx. Thank you for saving Preston High School. My daughter does not attend Preston, but her friends and many others from this neighborhood do attend. Thank you for influencing the MTA to pu- put a bus route down to Ferry Point Park for people to get to the ferry. Thank you for paying for the, the shuttle that gets everyone from small parking lot and the bus stop to the actual ferry. Appreciate it. Yeah, you don't use it. Moving to more posi-, moving to more positives that I find, the Bally's Company is committed to union labor and union maintenance as, thank you very much. Uh, union labor and maintenance to the facility. This also means you, union employees at card tables, custodial jobs, uh, hotel workers, et cetera. Union jobs provide livable wages, medical plans, 401Ks, retirement plans. These are all major tools moving forward today and in the future. Fiscal security helps aid positive things in life. Bally's has committed to building an overpass closest to the White Stone Bridge to entrance into their casino from people coming from the south to alleviate Lafayette Avenue traffic. There's the traffic. There's also been committed to building up the roadway at the bottom of the turn of Ferry Point Park that floods.
Time.
Okay, I apologize. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have speaker number twenty-five? Okay, twenty-six to thirty, please. Twenty-six to thirty. Another reminder for cell phones.
How you doing? My name is Ernesto Robles. I'm with Local Three also. I went to school, my senior scandin and to St. Helena's, so I graduated from Helena's. Um, I too am from Coop City, like the brother over there, and, um, like I said, like everyone else said, this will bring a lot of jobs to, uh, the area. Yes, a lot of people opposing it, but you know what? We shouldn't be opposing jobs and, and to make things better for everyone. Local Three has given my family, uh, my, my kids go to college, my, I put them through high, through grammar school. They went to OLA right here, St. Teresa, so I'm from the area, pretty much. Yes, I'm not from outside, I'm not from down the street, but... But I've been in this area long enough. I come here, like, like my brother said, we come and meet here once a month at the Acorn Club with Local Three. So I pretty much am around the area a lot. And I do approve of this. It's good for us. It's good for change. It's good for our families. You know what I'm saying? I want my kids to have a job, like I have a job. You know, you guys want to have your kids to have a job? Yes, a lot of you guys don't want this around here, but we want it around here. We want our kids to have a job. We want our kids to have someplace to go, someplace to work, someplace to make money. You know what I'm saying? They're supposed to bring permanent jobs, you know, some temporary jobs because of the construction. But once the construction is over, there'll be a lot of permanent jobs here for everyone. So I do approve of this. I want this. I want this for me, my family. Does it guarantee me working there? No. Does it guarantee my friends working there? No. But it does guarantee that there's going to be a lot of union jobs for a lot of people to work there. And that's what matters, that all our local brothers from different unions will have a job somewhere. And it will be right here in the Bronx to make the Bronx better. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Mitchell Halpern. I am the chairperson and of Landing Zoning for Community Board Nine. The Bally's project offers an opportunity here to generate thousands of jobs, both in construction and long-term operations, especially at a time where economic growth instability is so barely needed here in the Bronx. These are good-paying jobs that allow families to stay rooted here, support their children, and strengthen the neighborhoods. Now, beyond employment, the proposal also includes meaningful investments in, excuse me, public space and infrastructure improvements. The development also represents a chance to attract visitors and economic development here in the Bronx in ways that the community hasn't seen before. But it also, more importantly, sends a message that the borough is open to responsible investment and allows our residents here that they're no longer going to be overlooked when it comes to opportunities for growth and revitalization in the Bronx. For these reasons, Community Board Nine stands firmly behind this project, and we urge the council to give it some full approval. We thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Good evening. To be or not to be, that will be the question. My name is Joe Mondello, number 28. A lifelong resident of the Bronx, a homeowner, small business owner, and a graduate of Samuel Gompers. I watched how our surrounding community has changed, and not for the better. Admit or not, an influx of crime has creeped into our streets. These are not your friends, family members, or neighbors who's causing these crimes. They are gangs, hoodlums, and low-life scums that come from outside, getting in graffiti, car break, and robbery shootings. How do we fix it? Oh, well, we get together, we pray until the next time of violence. Remember, the criminals don't care about you, and it's going to get worse. I want to speak in support of the proposed Bally Casino project. For me, it isn't about new build, it's, it isn't about a new building. It's about the opportunity it will bring to help rebuilding our community. Besides, this project means good-paying jobs during construction, permanent jobs once the doors open. It means more visitors spending money, not just in casino, but also around our local restaurants, shops, and businesses. That's revenue staying here instead of leaving town. A casino gives a place for seniors to get out of the house, play nickel-and-penny slots for entertainment. Bingo halls are gone, and so do those bookies. People like the game of chance. That's why they play Lotto. It's only the city, it's only the city who's siphoning money from our pockets, like congestion pricing, higher gas pump, increasing insurance and premiums. Maybe we all have a little extra money and, and have a little, little more fun. The casino means new tax dollars that can go towards schools and public safety and community that we all depend on and investment back in the places where we exam. There are concerns, responsibility, gaming, strong security, smart planning, boat traffic, infrastructure, which has been addressed anyway in closing. This casino is a step forward, not just for entertainment, but for jobs, revenue, community strength, and that's why I believe in it.
Thank you. Please hold your applause. We've been doing well so far. Please hold your applause. Thank you. You can go ahead.
I'm number 29. My name is Laura Guerriero, and I'm speaking today for the third time in favor of the Bally Casino project. I'm a lifelong resident of the Throggs Neck Country Club community and publisher of The Bronx Times Reporter. During the nearly 40 years I've been associated with the newspaper, I've witnessed so many times the expansion of businesses bypassing the Bronx. The Bally's Casino project is an opportunity for the Bronx to reverse the economic slight it has endured for countless decades. When I imagine the potential of this project's immense effect on tourism, year-round employment, the $100 million in park investment, and the annual $10 million-plus benefit package, I feel the Bally's Casino project clearly delivers the greatest economic impact of all the suitors for, for the three casino licenses. I believe the Bally's Casino project, out of all the other projects, makes the most sense. Bally's would be located in a corner of Throggs Neck, away from professional baseball, tennis, and soccer stadiums, major airports, Broadway theaters, beaches and boardwalks, and would be easily accessible by car, public transportation, and a ferry. Already, Mr. Kim and the Bally's organization has impacted the Bronx by saving Preston High School from closing and purchasing an 18-hole golf course and turning it into a tournament-worthy course. I vote yes for the Bally's project and the union jobs they will be providing. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Oh, good evening, everybody. My name is Frank Abate, and yesterday I turned 96 years old.
That's applause.
We can clap for this. Thank you. But now, please, now, please hold your applause.
Evening. I don't believe it. Okay. I lived my whole life in the Bronx. I've seen good times and bad times, this great borough experience. I saw the prosperity of the 40s and 50s, oh, sorry, while working in my dad's fish store on Bainbridge Avenue. There was a time when the Bronx was a suburb where families escaped proud of Manhattan apartments to purchase a home of their own. And the Bronx has magnificent private homes. I didn't know what to do four years after I came out of the Army, but I read someplace, I'm saying this to you young kids, men and women, I read about emotional products industry, where you can go to someone and sell glasses, mugs, umbrellas, et cetera. You know what that is, right? And there's a point I'm bringing. The first six years were a horror. I wouldn't do it again. I had two baby sisters, two girls, daughters, 13 months apart, and I had zilch in my pocket. I couldn't buy anything. But everything turned around, and thank God, I said to you young kids, you can do it. Everything turned around. I became one of the biggest distributors in the metropolitan area. Thank God. I landed accounts like Sports Illustrated, Youngest Raceway, and Trump Castle. I mention Trump Castle because the casino spends hundreds of millions of dollars with giveaways. Now, the Bronx must have people that provide umbrellas, T-shirts, blah, blah, blah. So there's an opportunity for young kids that don't know what to do, go into the premium business. It is a multi-billion-dollar business and very exciting. Okay, where was I? Okay. Okay. Young people don't have the same opportunities I had. I think Bally's will give you opportunities, whatever their age. The Bronx needs good-paying jobs. Bronx workers need jobs and benefits. That's why I'm here today speaking stones of all of Bally's Ferry Point.
Thank you very much, sir. We're at time.
I quit. The project will bring thousands of good jobs.
Sir, thank you very much. Thank you for your time. We appreciate it. Thank you very much. Thank, I'm sorry.
One more word. The best word is just to come.
Sir, we can take your testimony up here. We'll put it into record. Thank you very much.
One word.
Sir, I apologize. You're at time. Thank you. Can I have 31 through 35 up to line up, please? Speakers 31 to 35. We have number, number 31, please. Okay, 32.
Number 32. Name is Miguel Torres. I'm a New York City District Council representative of the Carpenters of New York City, the greatest union, I believe. But today, I just want to say one thing. I just want to say, we're all here, right? And everybody's passionate about their feelings, right? Some guys are against it, some guys are for it. As labor leaders that we are, we represent labor, and we want labor. We, we have, I represent 18,000 men, right? Not only me, but today I stand with my brothers, with my electricians, with my DC9. Everybody here is a union member. We all want this development to happen. It happens to 4,000, 15,000 construction jobs, 4,000 permanent jobs. This is what we're here for, right? Not only that, I got some facts on, if I can find it real quick. Right, quick, right, quick. It's a tax revenue, $357 million annually, an economic impact of 1.9 billion annually, 15,000 union construction jobs, and nearly 4,000 permanent union jobs. Not estimated 9 million annually, with 8.2 million from outside the Bronx. This is what the Bronx needs, and it needs it now. You know, everybody here, whether you're for it, you're against it, we need jobs. I represent the Bronx as a representative, as an organizer. This is the poorest borough in New York City, and we need something to change. We need everybody to be on the same page. We need this to happen for us, for all our union brothers and sisters, but more importantly, for the Bronx. Because this is all about the Bronx. Today ain't about none of us, whether you're for it or you're not. It's for the Bronx. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Awelda Codaro. I'm a community activist for more than 30 years. I used to work with the Assemblywoman Arroyo. And I am here because I am a homeowner in this, in this community, and 10465 is my district. I've been here raising my kids by myself. And they all, my, my daughter and my son graduated from St. Benedict and also from Scalen High School. And I also love that they saved this high school that, Preston, that was having their problem. And I am for the casino because it's going to give us jobs for our youth in the community. I run a nonprofit in East Tremont. I see the youth running up and down the community, doing nothing, wasting their time, fighting inside McDonald's. Come on, if we go open up this casino here and give them jobs, the 18-year-olds, and get them off the streets, why not open up the casino? We have that park back there that all they're doing is killing people sometimes, hurting people, robbing people. So if we could put the casino back there and put some security back there, I don't think we'd continue having any crimes back there anymore. So we need to have the union workers working, not have them laid off. They need jobs, and we need to bring jobs into this community. 10465 has changed. I've been here 30 years. I bought my piece of house right in front of the water 30 years ago, and it was definitely no houses, nothing there. Now, yes, we overcrowded, but it's okay. Everybody's welcome. We should all eat from the same plate. Why not? I come from the South Bronx. I bought my property here in, in Throggs Neck, and I raised my kids here. And I'm a very proud mother. So I love Throggs Neck and let it continue moving on. No more jails, no more shelters. We need something positive. Thank you.
Thank you. Please hold your applause. Please hold your applause. Thank you. Go ahead.
Speaker number 34. My name is Lorenzo Tiribasso, and I am a former player and now coach at Legacy Volleyball Club. Additionally, I serve as a member of Outdoor Operations at Bally's Golf Links at Ferry Point. Being a part of Legacy has taught me discipline, time management, and leadership. Not every young person in the Bronx has the chance to be a part of something like this. But with more investment in our borough, more kids could. Sports programs like Legacy can be transformative, teaching essential life skills that extend beyond the court or field. When young people have access to structured, structured activities and mentorship, it often does make a significant difference in their development and outlook. Studies now show that my generation no longer believes that hard work pays off, and this is sickening. That is why I believe the Bally's project is absolutely crucial for our community's future. Young people deserve real opportunities to succeed, and this project will deliver them. It will create thousands of good-paying jobs that can support families and build careers right here in the Bronx. That economic activity it generates will ripple through our neighborhoods, strengthening local businesses, and creating a foundation for long-term prosperity. Most importantly, it will establish robust community programs and world-class facilities that will serve our residents for generations to come. This isn't just a development. It's an investment in our people and our potential. Thank you. Have a good day.
Applause, please. Thank you.
Good evening, community advisory.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening, good evening, community advisory council. I'm Sarah Calat from Legacy Volleyball Club. Legacy has transformed my life. I'm a student-athlete at Preston High School, saved by Bally's. I support the Bally's Ferry Point proposal as it will, as it will aid programs like mine. Thank you.
Thank you. 36 to 40, please. Speakers 36 to 40.
Hello, good evening. My name is Ronnie Amaya, and I play Legacy volleyball here in the Bronx. Being part of Legacy has changed my life in so many ways. It has gave me coaches who pushed me to do better, teammates who support me like family, and opportunities to travel and compete that I never thought I would have. The lessons I've learned through this program go far, but go far beyond volleyball. They have taught me, they have taught me how to focus, to be disciplined, how to work as, as a part of a team, and how to keep my focus on school and my future. Programs like Legacy keep kids like me engaged, motivated, and on the right track. I support Bally's Ferry Point proposal because it will bring new resources and investment to our community. If projects like this can help more programs grow, more programs grow and give kids more chances to learn and play, then it's something the Bronx truly needs, and I'm proud to speak up for it. Thank you.
All right, good evening, board, everyone present. My name is Robert Gray. I'm the president of the American Turners, the building you're in now. We welcome you all tonight, and thank you for allowing us to host this event. The American Turners began as a German-American cultural and athletic society. But closing on two centuries now, we celebrate 175th this year. We reflect with pride on how this building has served for generations as a gathering place for sports, family events, civic events, cultural programs, community traditions like the inter-club races, which we host next year. All endeavors to keep the community together and, you know, hopefully moving forward. Like many longstanding institutions, we face challenges in maintaining our facilities and keeping our programs accessible. That is why conversations like this project Bally's is proposing. Large-scale developments naturally raise a lot of questions. There's no doubt about that. But they also bring us possibilities. And being a lifelong resident of this borough, I, many times in my life, lacked any possibilities. I, many times in my life, lacked any possibilities. It's possibilities to improve our infrastructure, support for community organizations, and resources that can help strengthen the neighborhood anchors. I can understand honestly the strong feelings both pro and against. I cannot see my community be left behind, as other boroughs reap financial benefits and growth. This has happened, look at Brooklyn, you know, Brooklyn, crime-infested areas, big swaths of unemployment, and all of a sudden, they have, you know, million-plus-dollar condos. And the Bronx is always staying in the background. I've had enough of that. I cannot see, neither do I want to see another institution.
Thank you very much. We're at time. Thank you very much. Thank you. We have thirty-eight? Okay, thirty-nine?
Good evening, speaker number thirty-nine. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Eddie O'Brien. I'm a father and retired public safety professional, a proud supporter of St. Benedict's School. My two daughters attend in this neighborhood and member of Turner Club. I also am a founder of West Thirteenth Group, a public safety consulting firm, and I travel around the world for I Love You Guys Foundation to do public safety training for schools and other organizations. Today, my mission is to ensure schools, first responders, communities, businesses, and public spaces are prepared for hazards, so our children have a place to safely grow and learn. But safety is not enough. Children need outlets and programs that put them away from social media into real relationships, sports, and mentorship. As a Turner Club member, I have seen how facilities shape lives. The Turner Club gym floor needs repair, so we can expand the programs we have here. St. Benedict's School looks constantly for funding, so we have more programs for our children, for a school that's served this neighborhood for a hundred years, and continue to do so despite the changing economic situation of the Bronx. I go back and forth every day of support or not supporting this program and the casino itself. But the Bronx struggles and drives for economic development, which we have not gotten forever. The security challenge is real. Bally's is creating a casino, which is a soft target, a crowded location where hostile actors may try to act. You will sit there and make that a fortress, and that casino will have security. What are we going to do for the secondary targets in our neighborhood? It's a question I ask Bally's, and please answer that. Eventually, we push them out of the casino area, but they go other places, which many in the neighborhood fear. Because at the end of the day, a true measure of a community partner isn't how secure your own walls are, but how safe our children, our community are within the vicinity of your project. Thank you very much for your time.
Hi, I'm number forty. My name is Madison Monell, and I am a student athlete at Legacy Volleyball Club here in the Bronx. Being a part of Legacy has changed my life. It gives me a safe place to spend my time, stay out of trouble, and focus on school. I've learned discipline, teamwork, and confidence, things that helped me not only in volleyball, but in the classroom and on my future goals. The Bronx needs more opportunities like this. With Bally's Project, there will be better facility, facilities, more programs, and new jobs for our families. That means kids like me can keep chasing our dreams, and parents can feel secure in knowing we are safe and supported. I support this project, and I kindly ask you to support it as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hold applause, please. Speakers forty-one through fifty. Can you please line up? Forty-one through fifty.
Okay. Hi, everybody. My name is Angel Colado, and I-
A reminder to please be quiet while speakers are talking. Same opportunity and respect to all speakers. Thank you. Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, everyone. My name is Angel Colado, and I am the approved parent of a student at Preston High School here in the Bronx. Likes, like so many families, we love Preston and education, support, and opportunities it provides for all child. That's why I urge you to approve Bali Casino. It will bring not only new jobs, new jobs and economy opportunity, but also a track record of real community invest, investment, something the Bronx has needed for a long time. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Gilberto. Hello, my name is Gilberto Constantines, and I'm number forty-two. I'm a Bronx resident. I'm in full support of Bally's Hotel and Casino coming to the Bronx. I use the White Stone Bridge, so I drive past the golf course. I understand the traffic concerns, but I believe the pros outweigh the cons. I live in the Bronx my whole life, and I still live in the Bronx. I'm a union electrician, and this is a wonderful opportunity. Bally's is willing to invest in the Bronx. A casino was recently built in Queens, and my friends who own homes said their property values went up. They redid a lot of infrastructure, plumbing, streets, and other improvements that make the community better. Bally's is offering six hundred and twenty-five million invested in the community, ten million per year, a new police station, better transportation and roads, a commitment to work with the community on what it needs. Let's stop focusing on the negatives and get it done. At other meetings, I've heard concern of more land grabs and projects being built under our noses, and this gets approved. What we do, we could put things in writing, concerns about land use and future development after construction begins. These maybe should not prevent us from moving forward. And around where I live, I live in the South Bronx, there's nothing but hotels, shelters, and rehabilitation centers. It will be refreshing to see something of this magnitude and positivity to come in the Bronx. Thank you.
My name is Tenzin Lama. I'm a first generation from Tibet and Nepal. I am also a previous athlete at Legacy Volleyball here for the past five years, and now I'm a coach and a digital media worker in Legacy. Playing volleyball, Legacy has given me so many opportunities for me to continue my career and passion as a son of immigrants. Through Legacy, I've learned how to connect with others and build skills that'll help me in life. It is more than a volleyball program, and it is a safe space for me to, for kids to come together, make friends, and be encouraged to dream bigger. I want every kid in the Bronx to be able to feel the same encouragement and guidance that I have. And the Bally's Ferry, the, sorry, the Bally's Ferry Point Project will help bring that. Thank you.
I am number forty-four. My name is Carol DeChara. I am a local resident. I've been here all my life. I will be turning sixty soon. So that's a long time. The neighborhood has seen some change, and, um, yes, development's good, but sometimes not in every place. My concern is the environmental hazards underneath Ferry Point Park. Um, was we were growing up, it was not only a dump for forty years, but it has cars, refrigerators, oil, anything and anything that you could possibly dump got dumped in that place. Not only while the dump was going on, it, it was after the dump was going on. So during the development of this property, there were tons of fill that had to be brought in, because they could not dig, because the methane gas was so strong. So my biggest concern is, is how do we go about that? Because the local residents had issues back then. So the property was grounded, was filled with, with dirt, and it was capped under EPA regulations. And from what I understand under EPA regulations, you can never disturb that cap. So how do you build a building like this if you can't disturb the cap? I'd like to know that, and I'd like to know, what will they do? There's still methane vents there now. How do we disturb that property? How do we ensure that the local community does not get filled with hazardous waste? How do you ensure that these union workers are not sick while they're building? How does, how does any of this happen unless we know what's underground? It's, it was one of the biggest toxic sites in the city. So beyond that, um, we also have two other casinos that are very close.
Reminder to please, please keep quiet while speakers are speaking, including those in line. No, I interrupted her.
Thank you. So we have two other casinos that are very close, and within fifteen minutes. And I think we should advance on them. I don't think the property should be here under a hazardous waste site. Thank you.
Do we have forty-five or forty-six?
Hello, I'm number forty-six, Brian Kroll. I'm the PGA General Manager at Bally's Golf Links at Ferry Point. And I thought I would add a little different perspective to this group. Being an employee of Bally's, I can assure you that they are committed to doing this the right way. I'm not an engineer, but I know that there will be incredible scrutiny in this project, and it's going to be done safely and properly. Um, my, my feeling is, as I listen to everyone, and I've been in a number of these meetings, there are many reasonable concerns. But a project like this offers such tremendous opportunity, and there are answers to all those concerns. This is a once-in-a-generation opportunity for the Bronx. I, I think it's something that would be foolish of the Bronx to pass on. This is, this is incredible. I mean, this opportunity to create jobs and strengthen this area, it's, it's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. The other thing I'll say is, it's in a unique area. Um, we're in the Bronx. I work there every day, and I can tell you that it's a unique buffered zone. We are surrounded by two hundred acres of a golf course, a cemetery, the East River, Ferry Point Park. There are no immediate neighbors. This is something that is here in the Bronx, but also isolated to a certain degree. It's a great opportunity to bring the right type of people into this area to support it. Again, as a note on Bally's, they are committed not just to this project, and certainly they're committed to making profit and running a successful business, but they are committed to investing in the community. They've shown that in the two years that I've worked here, and that is not going away. There is a tremendous investment in this community, and it's a part of any successful business plan. So as a representative of Bally's, I, along with Lorenzo, can tell you, these are good people that want to do the-
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Great evening, number forty-seven. Community engagement and civic awareness are important, and that's what's manifest here tonight. So thank you to the Community Advisory Committee for holding this hearing, and thank you for all sharing your perspectives here. That is really what is, you know, great to see. The Bronx does it better. And I'm Michael Max Nobby, the Executive Director of BronxNet, your public service multimedia network, serving the people of the Bronx with career-building, experiential learning for students. These are opportunities for youth, for workforce development, for the public. It's a local programming, local jobs, civic awareness, multi-platform channels from the Bronx to the world, and more. And over the course of three decades, we provided media education for thousands of Bronxites. And we've built studios for you, the public, in the East Bronx here at Mercy University, BronxNet at Lehman College, and BronxNet's Media and Technology Studios in the South Bronx. As someone who's born and raised in the Bronx and who lives and works in the Bronx, this is our heart, and this is our home. I love the Bronx, and I truly appreciate the perspectives here. I have to share also that historically, as we know, the Bronx has experienced disinvestment over the decades. And now before us is an impressive opportunity for what will be the largest private investment in the history of the Bronx, with the creation of local jobs, workforce development, funding for education, true positive economic impact, upgrades to parks, funding for schools, and more. The people of the Bronx should never be left behind, and we support the robust community benefits that come with the Bally's proposal. Thank you.
Number forty-eight. Good evening, members of the CAC, community members, fellow union brothers and sisters. My name is Jorge Arias. I am proud to serve and represent as a business agent for District Council Nine, the Painters Union Allied Trades. I represent over ten thousand working men and women who built and maintain New York City. I am also proud and born in the Bronx, so I've been living, and I still continue to reside in the, in the Bronx. We're here tonight because of Bally's has the potential to deliver more than just on entertainment. It can also deliver opportunity with this project. It's a model for economic growth. It truly benefits the working people of the Bronx and its surroundings. This means good-paying jobs for families. It's not just a paycheck. Also, it creates a career, making a union, um, jobs, which creates the apprenticeship program, which allow youth to create a career and get out of the, our streets currently, that the crimes is always being targeted as the worst borough in the boroughs neighborhood throughout the five boroughs. I see that Bally's has been committed to help out the city, especially with Preston. I usually, before becoming a business agent for District Council Nine, I worked loading the vending machines at Preston. So seeing that they went through all of that, and Bally's came and supported the community, they've been working hand-in-hand, so I don't think that that's going to create any more issues throughout the borough in this area as well. Also, the safety concern, there used to be a waste. They used to just dump garbage back there. With this, they're going to build a casino. That means they're going to bring security. There's going to be cops. There's going to be a lot of other stuff. So we could work, I'm running out of time anyway, so thanks for your time.
Hello. Hello, I represent all the unions. I'm an ex-union, union member of eleven eighty-one, and my father was union delegate for four fifty-six. And I have a, a cousin that is a big builder. We don't need another project here. We don't need another project. I, I support Bally's because we, they would be better than having a project. And it would, the schools would be better off. They would get revenue. And I go to Empire City, and I have no problem. And, and the streets I go there are not crowded. I think we need Bally's here. And, and union jobs. I grew up on Cortlandt Avenue in, in the Bronx, and that was Little Italy, Little Italy. When the projects came in, what happened? They all moved and went to one hundred eighty-seventh Street. We don't want this here. Thank you. I meant to say, we don't want the projects here. We want a casino, and it's good-paying jobs for people that can't go to college. They make more than college-
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you for clarifying. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Catherine McKay.
I'm sorry, we have to make one quick announcement. I apologize. Cadillac SUV is blocking the driveway. License plate EMP eighteen twenty-eight, New York plates. All right. Thank you. We apologize. Thank you very much. You can go ahead.
Hi, my name is Catherine McKay, and I'm a lifelong Bronxite. And the last, oh, sorry. The last time anybody invested anything into the Bronx was when they built Bay Plaza Mall. And when they built that, everybody was screaming, no, the Bronx people have no money. They're never going to shop. And here it is, twelve years later, and it's up, running, and constantly busy. That, to me, should have been a catalyst that Bronx people deserve more. And I think Bally's understands that, and that's one of the reasons that they're trying to come here. Create jobs, entertainment, safety, donating. They pledged ten million dollars minimum to all local nonprofits, of which I work for one, that, you know, deals with seniors. And seniors, they do like to gamble. They do like to socialize. And I don't think it's a bad thing that they have a safe place that they can go to locally. By building this, it can also bring tourism development into the Bronx, which is severely lacking. Outside of Yankee Stadium, Bronx Zoo, and Botanical Gardens, which is all seasonal, we have nothing to do all year round, except go to bars or local restaurants. And no, I don't want a Trader Joe's, okay? I'm so sick of hearing Trader Joe's. And with that, good luck bringing it here. Thank you.
Thank you. Fifty-one through sixty, please. Speakers fifty-one through sixty. We're doing well, everyone. Another reminder to please remain quiet and respectful while speakers are at the mic.
Hi, everyone. My name is Joshua Saveldo, and I'm a proud alumni of Legacy Volleyball Club. I'm now continuing my journey as a college student. Um, the Bally's Project has potential to create even more opportunities for Bronx youth to grow, pursue college, and imagine brighter future, brighter future. It would also bring good jobs to- It would also bring good jobs to local family and strengthen our community as a whole. I wholeheartedly support the initiative and I hope you will too. So more kids, so more kids from Bronx can have the same life-changing opportunities I did. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Sorry, the car we announced before Cadillac SUV is about to be towed. A plate EMP 1828. Again Cadillac SUV blocking the driveway, about to be towed. All right. Thank you very much. Go ahead.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Grace Marrero and I have been a community advocate for 20 plus years. I am in a bunch of community organizations. I don't live in this area. I'm originally from the South Bronx. I live in the Allerton Avenue area now. And to be transparent, I am the candidate for the Bronx Borough President on the conservative line. What we have here is a failure to communicate. Bally's never approached the community with the idea. They went straight to the elected officials to get everybody else on board before they came to the community and to try and exchange ideas. I don't think people are against the jobs. We want people to have jobs. I think what people are against is the casino itself. We don't want the gambling here because we all know, and you can sugarcoat it as much as you want. We all know that casinos bring crime, prostitution, organized crime, and a host of problems that the community does not want. I think that's the problem. I think there should be some kind of dialogue. There's got to be some kind of a, a middle ground. There's got to be some kind of compromise. Why a casino? If the casino is such a good idea for the community, why not build it in the South Bronx instead of that 2,200 bed for illegal migrants? Why not build it in the South Bronx where that is a depressed community? Why not there? I'm from there, so I know what's what. Why not build a community friendly, a family friendly facility that everyone can enjoy and not have the, the bad stuff to go with it? There's going to be bad with everything, but it won't be as bad as that. And I, that's what I think people are against is the casino itself, not the jobs.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, hello, hello. My name is Wilton Martinez. I am a Legacy Volleyball Club alumnus. I played here two years ago. I'm also an immigrant. I came here when I was like eight and what I kind of know from where I came from is not every place gets a chance to keep going. That's sort of like the environment I came from. From the first time that I had a practice here, I was put in an environment with a lot of different people. They were all a year older than me and I love them still here, even though we don't keep in touch anymore. I love them because they kind of gave me a chance to see that there was like so much more out there from just what I was seeing. I came from poverty to more poverty and not having gotten that chance, I don't think I could stand here and say that I'm creating a club in my school that I'm really excited for and that I have goals like playing pro volleyball and things like that. I don't think I could say that if I, you know, wasn't here. I don't have too much to say anymore. I'm for this project because if there's even a slight chance that it can give jobs to people, I think just having a job is a very, very powerful thing and that's it. Thank you very much.
54. Speaker 54. All right, 55. Go ahead. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Shirley Garrow and I'm currently a college student and a proud alumni of Legacy Volleyball Club. Legacy shaped who I am today. It gave me a safe place to grow up, strong mentors and the belief that a kid from the Bronx could go far. Now that I'm in college, I see clearly how important it was to have that support system. Bally's Project will give more kids the same chance I had to stay safe and to aim higher and prepare for the future in college. It will also bring good jobs and new opportunities for families in our community. I hope you will support this project and open more doors for the next generation for the Bronx.
Hello, everyone. My name is Nisa Yanos and I am currently a college graduate and a proud alum of Legacy Volleyball Club. Growing up, Legacy wasn't just a place to play volleyball. It was a second home. It gave me a safe space to grow, mentors who believed in me and the confidence to dream bigger than I ever thought possible. As a kid from the Bronx, having that kind of support system made all the difference. Legacy helped me shape who I am today, not just as a student athlete, but as a person. Now that I'm in college, I, I see just how rare and powerful that kind of environment is. So many young people in our community still need that. A space where they feel seen, supported and encouraged to reach for something more. That's why I believe so strongly in Bally's Project. It's not just about new facilities. It's about opening doors. It's about creating safe spaces, building futures and giving kids the tools they need to succeed in school, sports and in life, period. It also, it also brings jobs, fresh opportunities to families across the Bronx. I truly hope you'll support this project because every kid deserves the same chance I had to be lifted up, to be believed in and to see how far they can actually go. Thank you so much.
Good evening, everybody. My name is George Evranik. I'm a 69-year resident of the community, a longtime union member, but, and I love unions. Love unions. They gave my family a great, great opportunity. But I also love my parks. And you know, and many people up there that the dais there know me and they know I'm against this project because you're alienating parkland. Alienating parkland is a very dangerous door to open. When I presented this first to Mr. Jewett, Mr. Schleyer, Mr. Klein, I was told my fears were unfounded. Recently, in the recent mayoral race, you seen candidates Lander, Stringer and now Mandami have a policy where they want to alienate parkland and build affordable housing. So they want to take away our parkland. You opened up a very dangerous door by doing so. Now, I want to know why we are even here. No local support from any community group. No local community board support. No city council support. Security council, 28-9. Mayor overrides it, wants to send it back and then Morticia Adams decides not to have another vote. Why? Because we did our homework and we knew she had a super majority of 34. 34 votes killed this project. She refused to do it. She usurped the will of a community. She usurped the democratic process. She took the voice away from the community. Now, when I look up at the dais, I see too many affiliations I don't like. And respectfully, I know these people and I think highly of them. Alex Matt, I'm very personal friends with staffers of local, local politicians. You're not going to vote against your boss. I could tell you right now, vote up there is 5-1. I bet anything on it.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Again, thank you for your time. Again, we, we can have an email. You can email it into the CAC. Sir, thank you for your time. You can mail in the rest of your comment. We appreciate your time. Thank you. Thank you. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Natalia Corridori. I'm a homeowner in 10461 Pelham Bay. I'm also the president of Pelham Bay Little League. A good friend of mine asked me recently, what is Bally's really doing for us here in District 13? He was strongly against the project and I told him this. Right now, our community is in crisis. The 45th precinct, in the 45th precinct, crime is up more than 200% this year and the year isn't even over. Recently, we've had two homicides in Ferry Point Park and a shooting in broad daylight on West Chester Square. These crimes are being committed by our youth. And if we don't change something, this spiral is only going to get worse. What do we need? More police on the ground, a real shift away from these soft on crime policies. And we need our kids engaged in positive programs that keep them off the streets. Bally's is stepping up to address two of these three things. They've committed to fund two new police substations for the police precinct, for the 45th precinct, completely covered by Bally's, not taxpayers. And they pledged 1% of gambling revenue, starting at 10 million a year, to go directly into local nonprofits, youth sports, after-school programs, churches, community centers, the very organizations working with our kids every day. And let's not forget graffiti and litter plague our neighborhoods. That's also being addressed through Bally's Community Benefits Program. At the last advisory committee, someone asked, why are we here when this community board and the city council already voted against it? My question back is this. Why should 29 votes represent the voice of 131,000 people who will be directly impacted? This should been, this should have been a vote of the entire community. And as far as the New York City Council vote goes, it raises a question of ethics. Council members aren't voting based on what's best for each community. They're voting in blocks, cutting deals, so that when the shoe is on the other foot, other members will support their cause. That's not what they were elected to do. They were elected to represent us. It goes on, but.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rafael Aviles. I'm a volunteer coach over at a Pelham Bay Little League. Bally's Bronx Casino is set to ignite an incredible transformation within our community. This ambitious project is on track to become the second largest employer in the Bronx, just behind Montefiore, creating over 15,000 construction jobs. Within the next four years, it will provide long-term positions with entry-level roles and benefits with an average salary of these jobs projected to be 86,000 annually. What's even more exciting, as my president said, 1% of the casino gambling's revenue projected at 10 million annually will be dedicated to supporting local nonprofits. One of the standout features of this project would be a complete revitalization of Pelham Bay Little League. This league has been an advocating for female athletes for decades, shining a light on essential needs for ethical sports opportunities for girls. Pelham Bay Little League attracts talented young girls across the city, creating vital sports opportunities in neighborhoods where they often are lacking. The reality facing young female athletes are striking. Girls are often faced barriers such as limited access for sports programs, inadequate facilities and equipment, insufficient funding and lower quality coaching. A recent report highlighted that girls have 1.3 million fewer opportunities in high school point, high school sports than boys. As a proud father of two incredible daughters, I can personally speak on the proud impact of Pelham Bay Little League. This organization has kept my daughters engaged and focused on their education while offering the same safe space, encouraging, encouraging environment to pursue their athletic passion. Thanks to PBLO, my oldest daughter enjoyed two successful years, not only graduating, but playing three, but playing in Division III college softball from Monroe College, now known as Monroe University. This is the kind of opportunity we must work on creating for all young athletes in a vibrant community. Let's embrace this exciting journey and ensure every child can dream big and achieve their goals through sports. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Michelle Torioni. I am the president of the Pelham Bay Taxpayers Association. I am a lifelong resident. I just want to make it clear that last meeting, somebody came in and said they represented my association. They did not. We are against it, as I am against it. And we should probably thank, or Bally should thank the lobbyists. They got the people out tonight that don't live in the community, the unions and everything. You know who should, we should listen to? The councilperson that represents this community where these people are trying to build this. And she came to the community and we spoke to her and she heard us and she voted no. So this is not something that we want and we should listen to her as our councilperson. So you should vote against it and that should be it. It should, we shouldn't be here over and over again. I've been to several of these meetings and we've had several people in the community saying no. The lobbyists have brought out the unions and they don't live in this community. Yes, they want jobs, but they should try to go to Willett's Point. They'd probably get more jobs there lobby for that project.
Excuse me, please hold the comments. Please hold the comments.
Yes, 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 they should.
You will be asked to leave and be removed if you continue.
You don't like the truth. I know.
We've been doing well so far. Thank you.
Do some investigation. We should look into Bally's where they've had the casinos already. I've been to Chicago where they developed a casino. They didn't give them anything that they promised there and it's not such a nice casino. Thank you.
Speakers 61 through 70, please. And again, please hold the applause and comments so all speakers have the same chance to speak. You will be removed. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Hi, my name is Levon Francis and I live in this community for over 55 years. The casino, I hear you. The jobs, I hear you. We live here. Those people that are talking, they do not live here. Go get a job someplace else because you're going to bring problems here. I am a gambler. I gamble every day. Every day I gamble, but I will not attend the casino that is coming here because all it's going to bring is prostitution, drugs and problems. We have children here going to school. We have seniors living here. This is a community of where we live. Y'all better get ready to sell your houses because you're not going to be able to live in them comfortably. They are coming here and they're going to cause problems. That's what the casino brings. I do not even go to Atlantic City anymore because of the problems that I see out there. So what, you're going to get a job, but you do not live here. We live here. We do not need that kind of problems down here. And Chrissy knows it and that's why she voted against it. And you guys don't want to listen to our city council? She represents us. I am the TH Vice President for Thrall's Neck Houses and I have a voice to speak for our tenants. You, the seniors got sold out by a young lady. You paid her off, she took the money and she left the seniors there. That's not fair. They're seniors that are going to get hurt.
Please hold your applause. Please hold the applause. Thank you. 62. Speaker 62.
63. 63. Hello. In the Bronx, seniors are at most risk of homelessness and food insecurities. So do seniors in the Bronx near casino? Does the Bronx, the poorest near casino? The Bronx career politician in support of these casinos need to take responsibility for why the Bronx is last. Our schools are failing our kids, shootings in playgrounds and parks, everywhere trash, underfloor housing with drugs. Because our Bronx career politician failed us over and over again. Bally's cameras communities without disclosing the fact that the project includes a casino and will result in park alienation. In the movie Don't Look Up, politicians supported approaching comet that will destroy the earth because mining it will cost.
Attendees in the hallway, please remain quiet and respectful. Thank you. Please continue.
Thank you. In the movie Don't Look Up, politicians supported approaching comet that will destroy the earth because mining it will create jobs. Politicians sell us out for short gains while, while looking at that, it would destroy the whole community or even the whole Bronx. A casino with union jobs will happen regardless of where it will be located. But in the Bronx, it will hurt communities, help the marginalized communities, seniors and create more poverty and addictions. Let's look at the bigger pictures and let's do the right thing. The community said time, time again, as a park advocate to lose park alienation for casino, which always brings crime, traffic, pollution, prostitution, poverty. Why are we doing this in Bronx? Please Governor, investigate how Bally's is, is paying people off. I'm here on my own time after work. I'm not paid to be here, but look at who's being paid and what promises were made because Bally's did the same thing in Chicago where they bought support. Governor, the Bronx is a top in corruption. Governor Hockel, please look at what, who's getting paid off, please. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Good evening. I want to thank you first all for being here. Thank you for your patience and for listening to all of this. I want to just, I don't have this written. I'm kind of going offhand for this, but I live here, 10461. I work here, 10461. I'm not getting paid to be here. I have two children that attend Preston High School. Two young ladies that their high school was saved due to the efforts of Bally's. I grew up in Throgs Neck. My husband grew up in Morris Park. We're both raising our daughters in Pelham Bay. We're homeowners. Our community is not just where we live, but it is our home. There are a lot of great neighborhoods here in New York City, but this one is truly special. It has a deep sense of community, a rich history, and people who care about their neighbors. I want to see this neighborhood continue to grow and thrive, not only for my two girls in high school, but for many generations to come. As a parent, I believe deeply in the importance of investing in the future of our youth. That's why I am here today to express my strong support for the Bally's Casino Project at Ferry Point. We've already seen the positive impact that Bally's can have on our community. When Preston was at risk of closing, Bally's stepped in with critical, immediate support that no one else could provide, helping to keep the school open, preserving a vital institution that means so much to my family and so many others in the Bronx. Whether the project is approved or not, they stepped in and did it. Too many young people in our borough graduate without a clear path forward. Bally's has made a commitment to workforce development, including job training programs, internships, and scholarships. These are real investments in real futures, ensuring that we have safer green spaces for outdoor activities, recreation, community gatherings. It is all crucial in an ever-changing world where everything seems to be technology-oriented, especially for our younger generations.
Thank you very much. We're at time.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Marvin Tavares, and I'm a business agent for Sheetmate Workers Local Twenty-Eight, representing uptown Manhattan in the Bronx. I'm here tonight to voice our strong support for the Bally's Casino Project. For far too long, the Bronx has been overlooked when it comes to major investments and opportunities. This project represents a chance to change that narrative. It will bring meaningful economic growth, create good-paying jobs, and ensure that the Bronx is finally put first. Our union represents over forty-three hundred hard-working members, with more than five hundred living right here in the Bronx. This project would give them the opportunity to work where they live, that will solidify not only their families, but the community as a whole. Beyond our members, countless Bronx residents will gain access to stable, middle-class careers, careers that provide dignity, security, and a pathway to a better future. I recognize that there are concerns about the impact of this project. Those concerns are valid, and they should be addressed. But if Bally's commits to working hand-in-hand with the community in a transparent and responsible way, I firmly believe that the benefits will far outweigh the challenges. This project has the power to transform the Bronx, not just with jobs, but with hope, opportunity, and long-term growth. It's time for the Bronx to lead, and this is a step in that direction. And I just want to say one more thing before I end my conversation here with you guys, and I appreciate you guys listening to me. Even though I'm not born here in the Bronx, I have family here in the Bronx, and I have over three hundred members that live in the Throgs Neck area, and they all are one hundred percent in full support of this project. So just because I don't live here, doesn't mean that my members don't live here in the Bronx. Everybody has a neighbor that's a union worker. When anything happens in this country, everybody turns their backs on union workers, but guess what? We're the backbone of this country. Thank you.
Please hold your applause. Thank you. Again, for the folks in the back, please hold the commenting, the conversations, and the applause. Thank you very much. You can go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sequoia Harvey. I'm a-
Can you speak a little closer to the mic? Thank you.
You guys hear me now? I'm shy. Good evening, everyone. My name is Sequoia Harvey. I'm a single mother. I work. I'm a college student, and I'm here tonight with my kids. Balancing everything isn't easy, but I do it because I want them to have a better future. That's why programs like Travel with Chaz means so much. It's an organization that gives family like mine's experiences and opportunities we couldn't afford on our own. My kids are learning, growing, and staying involved in the community, and that matters. I also want to thank Bally's for supporting Travel with Chaz. I'm excited about Bally's Casino coming to the Bronx, because it is going to bring jobs, opportunities, and more investments in families like mine. So from me, my children, and so many other parents working every day, we welcome Bally's to the Bronx, and we're grateful for the brighter future you're helping to build. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Luis Munoz. Born and raised here in the Bronx, over thirty years. My family, we grew up in Morris Park. My parents still live in Morris Park, so I'm here in strong support for this project. I believe in the benefits it provides for the Bronx as a whole, New York as a whole, the trade unions and employment as a whole, and therefore the individuals and the residents of the Bronx as a whole, and not just one district. I just see this project, the links are pretty much set up in an already proven area, and it's isolated. I see this project as positive. I see it as an extension to an already proven site. Any issues with traffic will be mitigated with funds, and there's two bridges on either side. It's nestled in the perfect area, and so I support this project. With that said, I'm also a member of the Bronx Acorn Club. We are strongly tied with this neighborhood. As an example, later this month, on the twenty-third of September, we're going to be having a blood drive. So anybody of this, any residents of this area, please come support and save a life by donating blood from two-thirty till six. Thank you.
Sixty-eight? Speaker sixty-eight or sixty-nine? That's sixty-nine, okay. Sixty-eight? That's eighty-nine. Yep. Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, good evening. My name is John Corain. I live in Locust Point. I'm the president of the Locust Point Civic Association. I'm here with the vice president tonight also. Just to mention a little something from Locust Point, we have over three hundred families over there. I have not heard from one family that is in favor of this project. I have not heard that on the record or off the record, now that we got that out of the way. My main concern, and a lot of our neighbors, is the traffic situation and the nightmare that it's going to bring to Throgs Neck. Okay, right now, ways, if you're coming from the George Washington Bridge, will bring you off by the cemetery, and it brings you all the way down the service road to pop you into the entrance on the Throgs Neck Bridge. If this project is built, it is going to create absolute gridlock in Throgs Neck. They're going to come down the hutch, or they're going to listen to ways. If they can't get over that way, what they're going to do is they're going to pop over to the New England South. They're going to get off at Tremont Avenue, and you're not going to be able to move at all over there. If the project becomes a success, without a doubt, we think that they're going to open up Harding Avenue, and they're going to start bringing people in from Harding Avenue, and people are going to park all over those blocks, both sides of the street, taking every available parking spot over there. I've heard that Bally's is going to build a substation over there. That's great. Where are they going to get the police officers to work in that substation? There's probably four police cars in the four-five precinct right now, covering Co-op City down to West Chester Square, from the Arena Del Ray down to the Amazon Building there. I don't know where the police officers are going to come from. There's three hundred retiring each month. They can barely put cops out on the street right now. Okay, we have not, it's granted if they have some project programs for the kids, that's fine and well, but we all know what these casinos bring. I honestly don't believe one word that Bally's has said. I've been to every meeting that Bally's has had in this neighborhood, and I vote against it.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Speaker seventy? Speaker seventy? All right, can we get seventy-one through eighty to line up, please, if they're not already?
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm Joe Donovan. I'm the vice president of Locust Point Civic Association. As John Corain mentioned, our association is pretty much totally opposed to this project. I understand there's a lot of folks here, most of them from outside the community who represent unions. They want jobs. I can appreciate that. I have a lot of family members that are in the trades. That's wonderful. They come here, build a casino, get five years' employment, good work. And what happens then? The people of the community live with the fallout, what inevitably happens with most casinos, social degradation. I hear lots of young folks talking about volleyball clubs and other athletic activities. I've been to many, many casinos around the country, many out of the country, and I'm a jogger. I like to go running around these neighborhoods to see what the perimeter looks like. I've never seen a nice perimeter to a casino. I fear for what it will do to the youth, to the community. Moral degradation with respect to prostitution, and let's face it, gambling for many people is an addiction. You know, these folks specialize in the house always wins. They take a lot of money from a lot of people that can't afford to spend it, you know, and they're promising us the sun, moon, and the stars. I just have so many doubts that they're going to provide that stuff. So, listen, folks, don't be fooled. I get it. You want to get a job? That's wonderful, but the community is pretty much against it. And for the sake of people getting a few years of employment, I'd hate to see my community ruined. Thank you for your time.
Please hold your applause. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Eric Jimenez. I was born and raised in Washington Heights and the Bronx, such as Kingsbridge and Riverdale, and currently am owner of properties in Yonkers, where I'm a member of the Yonkers District Three Community Affairs Board. Not to mention that my parents are both buried in St. Raymond Cemetery, which I frequent very often. I attended Ohlala's High School up in the Bronx, a block away from the Yankee Stadium, as well as City College of New York. People, as humans, we're all scared of change. I understand, and I'm in favor of this project. It will create job opportunity and infrastructure growth, and this is what Bally's Casino comes down to. In twenty-five years as a local three electrician, I've been a part of many controversial jobs, MTA Station renovations, the one train, which people claim gentrification, if you can believe it, a subway station being gentrification. West Village transformation of new residences, and also built a brand-new school there as well, where people were afraid of the face of the neighborhoods being changed, just to name a few. I mention this because if this, if this change in our community is that what we fear, history has proven to be inevitable. I mention this because these neighborhoods are proof the neighborhoods have flourished from these projects, and that these neighborhoods have seen positive community surpluses, good union jobs and opportunities for work, and positive revenue for the Bronx is what is in our future. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to begin to change the face of the Bronx. Thank you for your time and your attention.
Good evening. My name is Viviana Pereira, and I'm a member of the Hotel and Game Trade Council, and lifelong resident of the Bronx. I've worked in New York hospitality industry for many years. I'm here tonight to speak in strong support of the Bally's Casino proposal, because it's the main real, permanent quality jobs for working people like me. For so long, the Bronx and its residents have been in order while business invests in other bottles. As a result, our community has suffered and missed all our investment in our infrastructure, our school, and our family. With Bally's, we can change this valley as a community to creating long-term careers with fair wages, strong benefits, and protection that families can rely on. This job will strengthen our community, and Bally's is also pledging millions of dollars for transportation and street improvement that will make life better for everyone in the Bronx. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, and it's fair to the Bronx to turn down a project that will help so many hard-working families. Thank you.
Speaker seventy-four? Okay, seventy-five?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you all for being here. I know everybody's very, very vocal about this, so I'm going to say my part. I was born in the Bronx, grew up in the Bronx, have a business in the Bronx, work in the Bronx, and I don't want to leave the Bronx. However, I've seen this whole change what's going on. Ferry Point Park, I used to ride my minibike there, you know, my RM one-twenty-five, and yeah, ran away from the cops, and again, so, you know, I get the cops calling, which is fine. But, okay, having said that, does anybody even know that Bally's is broke? Okay, they're three point three, over three point six billion dollars in debt. They've lost money, okay?
Excuse me, please remain quiet and respectful. Thank you. Please go ahead.
Lost money, okay? They haven't made a dime since, I think, four years, okay? Moody's has them as a cell. So what makes you think that because they bought that property from, you know, Preston, and everybody thinks that they're going to do something? They wanted to use that to make housing for their workers. That's the first thing they're going to do, once they get there. So it's not that they're going to save Preston. They don't give a crap about Preston. And they're actually a bad company. So I don't know what these union, oh, there's no one here. Oh, the union guys, oh, they all left. So wait, you're not going to get paid?
Excuse me, again, not a conversation. Please let him continue.
Get paid, all right? You want a real guy who did it? That Ferry Point Park, everybody says was a dump? Yes, and I used to love it, because every few years, they used to make more mounds, and I used to ride my dirt bike there. Trump did it, and they had to buy him out. So they spent an extra hundred and fifty million if this was converted to a casino. So they have dubious reasons for doing this, besides, like we said, the traffic, besides the prostitution, the drugs. You think that the substation there is there to protect us? No, it's to protect the people there when they go there, and they go and they collect, that they don't want them getting knocked over the head in the parking lot?
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, sir. We're at time. Thank you. You can submit the rest of your comment via mail or email. Thank you very much. Speak a little closer to the mic?
Hello, can you hear me? Okay. Hi, everyone. My name is Renata. I have been, I grew up in the Bronx, and now I'm raising my kids here in the Bronx. And you know what's really sad is the last thing I should ever have to worry about is to be able to reach them, because our streets would be congested and backed up. And what about the crime? The police station is already overstretched, and there's low numbers of police officers. Sometimes it would take up to thirty to forty minutes for a police to respond. With the casino being built, would that put a strain on our community? Do I have to worry about the rising asthma rates that are skyrocketing in our community? And yet, while we carry the burden, everyone outside the district, the very people not living with the consequences, are the ones benefiting. That is not fair, and it is not acceptable. Thank you.
Seventy-seven, seventy-eight? Speaker seventy-seven or seventy-eight? All right, seventy-nine? Okay, go ahead.
Many people against Bally's and low-income housing in this community have spoken about prostitution and a rise in crime in the surrounding areas. As somebody who is from Yonkers, at Empire City Casino, there is low-income housing a block away.
Excuse me, folks in the back, please allow him to speak.
Have a little respect, please. I will personally pay anybody against this project because of those-
Please allow him to continue to speak. Thank you. Go ahead.
I will personally pay anybody against this project, against this project because of those reasons, prostitution and crime. To sit on a corner overnight and witness any crime, I can guarantee you you won't in Empire City Casino. Because crime isn't the problem. It's just a narrative you're using because our president encourages it. And that's all I have to say about that.
Again, please hold applause and comments.
Hello, I'm number eighty, Lenita Jones, the district leader of the Seventy-Ninth Assembly. I spoke at two of these briefings, and this one was the worst one I have been to. But I just want to say that I'm for the Bally's project, because it's not only about the casino, it's about the hotels, spas, and the restaurants that will be built over there to bring revenue for all the residents in the Bronx, not just for one particular zip code, it's for all the residents in the Bronx. And also, I know there's some concerns with them building over there, but they're going to build a foundation. I don't know if a lot of people saw the project that Bally's had presented, and it's a great project, it's, it's wonderful, the way that they are going to do the constructions on the road is going to work. Y'all have to see the project for yourself. I don't know if everyone saw the project, but it's a great project. And normally, I have a long speech, because last time, I only had two minutes, and I didn't make it through. But I'm done. I just want y'all to know that this will help, and I'm glad that the youth, the youth spoke up for our generation, because our generation is really going down. They're killing each other, they're fighting, they don't have nowhere to go, they don't have nothing, no programs, nothing in their neighborhood. And this will bring something for our youth, okay? Thank you, guys. Appreciate y'all.
Thank you. Can I have the remaining speakers, please, stand in line? The remaining speakers, it moves eighty-one through eighty-nine.
Hello, everyone. My name is Mohamed Anmazmdar. So I'm here to strongly support the Bally's project.
Excuse me, please continue to remain quiet and respectful for the remaining speakers. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. Because I'm a lifelong resident of the Bronx, I have a small business in the Bronx, and I see every project have some disadvantage, but the advantage here will outweigh the disadvantage. Therefore, go ahead, please, everyone cooperate to bring something positive to the Bronx. And this is what I have to say. Thank you so much for listening.
Eighty-two? Speaker eighty-two? Eighty-three, all right. Thank you.
Eighty-three, here I am. Hi, everyone. Thank you for sticking around. My name is Melissa Medina. I am a resident of one oh four six one, and I'm a data analyst, so I want to share with you my findings. Less than ten miles away from any point in District Thirteen, we have the closest comparable to our future endeavor of Bally's. It's Empire City Casino in Yonkers. Luckily for me, they have to publish their financial statements. For the fiscal year, which runs from April twenty twenty-four to March twenty twenty-five, they had a net revenue of six hundred seven million, four hundred fifty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five dollars. Of that, three hundred and six million, seven hundred sixty-five, seven hundred and fifty-two was allocated to state education funds, which funds our schools. So why not have Bally's come do it for our kids and our schools? That's all right. Don't you talk already? Don't, don't, don't talk behind me. I'm talking. So of that six hundred and seven million, sixty million, seven hundred forty-five thousand, six hundred ninety-four was allocated to gaming floor admissions and administration. That's their workers, and they have seven hundred and forty-five employees. As of September twenty twenty-five, that's an average salary of eighty thousand, five hundred thirty-six per employee. So I'm putting numbers to everyone's abstract comments. Empire is on record as saying that they plan to add two thousand employees should they be awarded the full gaming license. Why not bring Bally's to do that here in the Bronx? If we build Bally's in the Bronx, it's our friends, our neighbors, our, our kids that can get these jobs. From April twenty twenty-five to August twenty twenty-five, Empire has paid out one, one hundred thirty-three million, four hundred fifty-four, and five hundred eighty dollars to education, twenty-six million, four twenty-six, six hundred and fifty, and salaries to those four, seven hundred and forty-five employees. That's an average of thirty-five, four, seven.
Thank you very much. You're at time. Thank you. Again, the next number in line chronologically? If you're seventy-seven, you can wait until the remaining speakers have gone, and then go again if there's time. Eighty-four, eighty-five? Speakers eighty-four or eighty-five?
Hi, my name is Angel Torres. I'm lifelong resident of this neighborhood. I've been in this neighborhood since nineteen seventy-three. I got up here working soda trucks. I've served this community as a firefighter, seven in this community, thirteen in other communities. Live lifelong resident here. I have nothing against this board. I'm opposed to the casino. I'm against it. One good reason tonight, you guys are here, you've been in here all night, listening to everybody else, but yet you've seen what happened outside. First of all, there was lack of police to protect the rest of people in the community. There was a lot of people smoking. If you'll see, when you go leave out here, the amount of garbage that's out there that's left behind by those people coming in here tonight. A lot of these people don't live in the community. I'm not against unions. I'm a union guy. I'm in a union right now. Okay, studio mechanics. It's just that there's a lack for the community for people to do anything or get involved here, okay? Environmental reasons, right now, because of Gulf course, it's a links course, it's an open course, they minimize the amount of tubes to let out the gas, methane gas. If you go to the cemetery now, on Randall Avenue, you'll see half the stones, they're all one rust color. If you go out there, it's also affecting the projects and the senior citizens buildings that are there. It's affecting the methane gases, it's seeping into those buildings. So there's a lack of work or trying to work with the environment in this community. As the gentleman spoke earlier, as far as PD, we have basically maybe three cars in the sector, which is not enough to police this neighborhood. This neighborhood goes beyond, it goes down to Ceriga Avenue. The gentleman said to us, yes or no, we go on the other side of Ceriga Avenue. So there's a lack of police, uh, environment, uh, lack of police force here as it is. As you see this community right now, we have a lot of issues right now with catalytic converters, airbags, and everything else. So all it's going to do is bring more crimes. Some people say no, but I've been up to the casino, I'm not a gambler, but I've been up to the casino in Yonkers for entertainment. And as you sit in the bar, there's prostitution, there's drugs, there's everything running around there. I don't want that in my community. Thank you.
Please hold your applause and comments. Thank you. Eighty-seven, he's going to read from the back of his number. Sure, sure. Yeah, no, go ahead. Thank you.
My name is Gregory Chigrannis. I was born in the South Bronx on Sherman Avenue. We left a high-density neighborhood. During that time period, a lot of people came back from Vietnam. There was a big drug addiction. There was a violent crime committed against my family. We moved to Pelham Parkway, which was a low-density area, probably also in the thirteenth. It was a beautiful childhood. I was happy to have it. You know, now we're talking about building another project and bringing Rikers Island individuals to where I used to go to a YMCA. So rather than having a YMCA for the kids now, I don't know, we're going to have to deal with incarcerated or former incarcerated individuals coming into Pelham Parkway. Every time I turn around, they want to change our community and turn it into something very different from what it is now. The Bronx is twenty, twenty-two percent owner-occupied. This neighborhood works, and we want it to work. All right, so, you know, if, if, if the city is hell-bent on, you know, making sure that we have, you know, a casino here, which seems to be the push, we have to understand that this community is a low-density community, we're a middle-class community. We need to be able to, to have access to our roads, we need to have a quality of life that's worth living. We've seen an increase in crime in this neighborhood, just like I saw as my childhood down in the South Bronx. Now they're stealing airbags, they're stealing tires, you know, and if, if anything happens here, there has to be something in it for the community. And I'm talking about upping our police force, making sure that we're not affected. Money for education, right, and protecting the low-density community of this neighborhood here. Low-density areas like this work, and they are the middle class that pay the taxes and do a lot. And they are the bulwark of our democracy. So you know what, you know, funding for Bronx, that is something I do want to say, because I do have a show there, but there is, there is going to be a crisis in, especially in the South Bronx and other neighborhoods because of lack of housing, all right? But that's not what I'm talking about here. I'm saying that this neighborhood works.
Thank you very much. You're at time. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Eighty-eight. Serendipity, serenity, and salutations to the community advisory board. I hope I'm saying you guys' name right. There's something that's lacking in this room, and it's called respect. That's R-S-E-P-C-T, whatever. I'm having a senior moment, even though I'm about fifty, but anyway. See laughter, it's medicinal. But we're supposed to lead by example, and there's a lot of conversations inside, talking, and respect is something that should be given. We're all adults here. So I appreciate one nine, one minute and twenty-seven seconds of silence. Thank you. I appreciate you guys' time. I'm not from this neighborhood, but I'm of this neighborhood. I was an assistant manager at the tennis club right up the block in Throgs Neck, and I am Bronx, and I am New York, and all of us are community. At the end of the day, it takes a village to raise. Everything in the village is not going to be something that all of us are going to agree upon. But as long as we can work together, as someone said, if we could work together, work hard, hand in hand with the community, and there's transparency, then everything can work effectively. There's a lot of strong feelings in this room, and that's understandable, but you be calm and be easy, because anything is not going to happen unless we force the issue. Tourism is important. The foundational black community is important. We're struggling. People are focusing on the casino, and not speaking of the tourism, of the spas, of the hotels, and of a lot of the things that this, this infrastructure can bring, what this has to offer. So keep this in mind. And at the end of the day, it's more so about the youth than it is about us and the future generations. So if the kids win, and the kids come out, then at the end of the day, that's all that matters. We could figure out traffic, we could figure out what's going on with the environment and the senior citizens, which I respect. But at the end of the day, if the youth wins, we win. It takes a village to.
Thank you very much. You're at time. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Will Sullivan. My family has lived in the same square mile since World War One. I'm pretty invested in this neighborhood. Just dropped my five-year-old off at St. Francis. He's like the fourth generation there. I am not going to say there's never been gambling in this neighborhood or prostitution in this neighborhood. You know, I bartended around Tremont. I've seen everything. But what I'm going to say is, once a year, I go to Atlantic City for my union seminar. I'm a delegate for my union, and I stay in a very nice hotel, Oceans, and I, I look onto AC, and it looks like a war zone. And I'm not going to say that's going to happen to an established place like the Bronx, but what I'm going to say, I do believe it's pretty predatory that they're going to open up a beautiful casino in one of, in the lowest income borough in the city. And I really don't think it's going to be in your mind like this, like swinging nightclub place. I, I think it's going to be like the, the slot machines off the boardwalk in AC, where it's just, oh, like, you know, it's going to be people outside getting five bucks, putting in the machine, coming back out. Money's money to these people. They're not going to say, oh, no, no, you, you're cut off on this, you, you, you know, you've, you've spent enough here. That's not the way casinos work. They're not looking out for us. It's crazy to think, oh, this major corporation's looking out for us. They put money into Preston. Do you think they put money into Preston because they want the Panthers to live on? No, they put money into, for good press. And do they think they have that free bus going up and down Tremont because they want good people from point A to point B? No, they want to divert everyone to the casino. Their corporation, they own, they, they have a responsibility to their stockholders and not to the community. And to think otherwise is silly. Jobs is coming, great. It's not coming to everybody in the community. All right, thank you.
You already spoke.
Yes, I know, but so did the other gentleman.
So we're going to end it here?
Hey.
Thank you, though.
Good for the goose, it's not good for the gander. Thank?
Okay.
Okay.
As we have no more individuals wishing to speak, we will adjourn this public hearing for the Bally's Bronx Community Advisory Committee. Thank you very much for your participation in this process. We are officially over.